Thank you for coming. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Planning Board for December 5th, 2019. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have quite a few continuances tonight, so I think we're going to start with those. If someone on the board could help me out.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Item 7J out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 5-0. Item 7J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.22.2. Solar energy system, ground-mounted of the zoning bylaws, 50 Margaret Street, Northeast Solar Services.
Is that?
Doing business as revolution is the...
That says "I." It says "Take 7J out of order."
It's meant to say "7-I."
Okay.
Sorry.
So, do we need to redo that motion? No. Okay. So, Northeast Solar Services, doing business as revolution, is the applicant.
Motion to continue this matter of the Planning Board meeting of January 16, 2020, as requested by the applicant in email dated December 3, 2019.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's 5-0. And...
Mushtir K.
So then this one's J and K.
7K.
J and K.
And 7L, is that?
I think we're doing J and K.
Excuse me.
Sorry about that.
I'm K and...
Yeah, it's...
J.
Yeah. J and K. It's a little confusing.
Uh, I'm not about to be confused with somebody else, please.
Madam Chair, I can make a motion to take Items 7J and 7K together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 6-0. Item 7J is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.6, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws, 376 Cambridge Street. The Granite Place is the applicant. And Item 7K is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 376 Cambridge Street. The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chair, let's make a motion to continue this matter of the Planning Board meeting of January 16, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 6-0. Next, we have citizens' time. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
So, there will be a meeting of the Sculpture Park Subcommittee of this board, December 10th, at 7:30 a.m. in the principal's conference room at Burlington High School. We will be having a zoning bylaw review committee meeting on December 11th at 6:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Annex Basement Meeting Room. I think that's going to be a joint meeting with this board and land use and zoning bylaw to talk about the rezonings.
Well, it's a joint meeting with land use and zoning bylaw review, and we encourage all of you to attend.
Yes.
At 7.
Seven.
It starts at 6, but we're not going to discuss things until 7.
Okay, okay. All right. Good to know. Starting at 7 o'clock. The deadline for general warrant articles for the January town meeting is December 13th. And then Christmas holiday, the Town Hall closes December 24th at 12:00 p.m. and reopens at its usual time on December 26th. And then New Year's holiday, the Town Hall closes at 3:00 p.m. on December 31st and reopens on January 2nd at the usual time.
Thank you. I'd like to add one thing.
Yes.
Burlington High School is doing their musical this year in the winter instead of the spring. And so, starting this Friday, December 6th, and then December 7th, December 13th, 14th, and 15th, they'll be putting on a production of Elf, the musical. So, it's a great family show, and everyone should go and check it out. I'm sure it'll be great.
Add one, Madam Chair?
Of course.
The annual town's annual holiday tree lighting is this Saturday on the common, 4:00. There'll be caroling, and I hear a special guest at the end, so...
So you can go to the tree lighting and then head down the street and go to the show?
There you go.
It's a full night. All right, thank you. Okay, we do not have any legal notices or non-accusers or administrative matters, so we're moving on to Item 7A. Actually, Item 7A, B, C, and D. May I have a motion to take these together for discussion purposes?
Um, sorry.
Do that.
Before... I know, I'm making everything complicated. We printed this... We thought we're all set. We printed the staff report before we made some of these decisions.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me. So, after the Subcommittee meeting this afternoon at noon, we had decided... So, the Item A is moving forward, but Item B, C, and D have been requested for a continuance.
Okay.
And I can talk about that a little bit more.
Okay.
Um, we wanted to really... Right now, we're in that critical period of time to get all the language exactly correct printed for the warrant, so we really want to spend some time on that. And the applicants have requested a continuance of B, C, and D. So if you want to continue those first and then get into the dimensionals...
That makes sense. May I have a motion for those?
Madam Chair, make a motion to continue Items 7B, 7C, and 7D to the Planning Board meeting of January 2, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 6-0. Items...
May I just ask a question? Are there going to be any significant changes? Because we spent quite a while on that today and so forth.
Well, we're talking about all the changes of the language in the warrant tonight. It's just the rezonings themselves we are not talking about tonight.
So, um...
But they will be in attendance at the December 11th zoning bylaw review land use meeting.
Right. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me.
No?
Okay.
For land use?
Oh, okay. So, Item 7B is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial district, 3 Vandegrift Drive, American Landmark, LLC is the applicant. Item 7C is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial district, 400 to 600 Summit Drive, The Gutierrez Company is the applicant. And Item 7D is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the high-rise industrial district, 60 Blanchard Road, 60 Blanchard Owner LLC is the applicant. May I have a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of January...
It's like a second, 2020.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 6-0. So, we are going to continue with Item 7A, which is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 5, dimensional regulation schedule to modify the height and dimensional requirements of the high-rise zoning district submitted by the Planning Board. So, Kristin, for the public, I don't know if you want to just quickly explain why those three are being continued, and then we can move on to Item A.
Um, well, we had a Subcommittee today at 12:00. We talked about the Board of Health changes that had been requested for the Board of Health and the amendments there. We talked a little bit about the... We actually didn't really get too far into any of the rezonings themselves.
No, we really didn't.
And there weren't very many comments. So I think the proponents kind of said, well, you know, if we're... You know, is it... Do you want to focus more on the IH dimensional stuff tonight and then have them come to our next meeting on December 2nd? So, I don't know if...
As far as we know, there's still plenty to move forward for January town meeting, though, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
But I'll get into... I don't know. Let me start getting into kind of the dimensional pieces, and then I'll...
Okay, thank you.
...make some sense. So, I passed out in front of you. There's an article, dimensional requirements. There's a few that we had extra for the audience. We had a meeting today. There was a few good suggestions. One of the main pieces that is new and has been re-advertised tonight is the very last page, which is Section 10.5.0, additional regulations for life science. So, that had been an existing section. So if you looked at what I had sent you, I had it all crossed off. This is just the new section. This has been discussed with the Board of Health. The Board of Health staff has put this language in place to really be the red flag to make sure that all life science goes to the Board of Health for review, recommendation, and a permit if necessary. And that's what this... This is the vehicle to... In the bylaw, to have that happen for both... Anything that goes to the building department or anything that goes to our... The Planning Board. So, one of the things that was important was to be consistent with the language that they use for biological agents and other things. So they made that consistent. We did actually just get comments from Town Council at like 6:30 tonight. She doesn't have any issues with the dimensional for... With this. She wants to just have a call with the Planning Board, Board of Health, to make sure we don't... We're not unintentionally overlapping jurisdiction and authority. So, and just making sure that the mechanisms are clear here of what type of permit that they're looking for and when we can act if it says we need to wait. So, this is good. So, Dr. Weiner has been here in the last couple of meetings. We asked staff today if he was all set. They didn't get back to confirm, but he seems... He was on the call that we had last Tuesday. But staff had mentioned that he was comfortable with Susan Luminal's edits. The second piece that we had talked about at the last meeting was the height prohibition... Not prohibition, the height exemption for parking under buildings. And if we wanted to maintain the two-story exclusion and if distance from residential made any sense. So, what we have edited under... On the third page, and I don't know, I guess I'm going backwards here. But the third page, we broke it into two subsections. So if your structured parking within 400 feet...
Page 2 of 3.
Page 2 of 3. Sorry.
2.
2 of 3, not 3, sorry.
2 of 3.
I condensed things, so we had four pages earlier today. That within 400 feet, you can have one story, one level of parking under the building exempt, but only the one. After 400 feet from residential uses or residentially zoned land and contiguous municipalities, you could... We still maintain the two levels. The other piece that came out of the discussion today and discussion at the Planning Board meetings is we added the sentence at the end, two sentences at the end, that of to maintain the policy objective is to allow flexibility in design to maximize potential for additional green space. And based on some of the recent land use comments, in addition, solar alternative energy generation infrastructure is encouraged and shall be exempt from the height calculations, which already solar is exempt from height calculations. We're just reiterating it to make... Just to make the point that we encourage, and it is still exempt. So, the exemption already exists. We're not changing anything. And that's it. Other than that, we... There were a few corrections we needed to make, just based on comments, some edits, in terms of some formatting that we made. And that's it for the changes to dimension. I think we had a good conversation today.
So, Kristin, the question.
Yeah.
In relation to the solar.
Mm-hmm.
Is it exempt from the height restrictions because it's supposed to... It historically goes on top of the roofs? Does that mean that even the freestanding is exempt?
This is in relation to parking structures, specifically in relation to parking structures.
Just a part, only a part.
So if someone put a parking structures or a building with parking under... Like, so if you had a parking structure in a building and you had solar on top, just the solar is encouraged and...
Right. So my point is again...
Is not calculated in the height.
Even if it's sitting on a parking structure, you can go up as high as you want with the solar?
You can now. Solar height is exempt. Alternative energy generation is exempt.
Yeah, it's... We don't have a...
Good point.
So...
Usually solar is, you know...
These two sentences have been added based on the conversation from today's meeting. So I encourage anybody who... From today's meeting who wanted to talk about them. They're... You know, they weren't our original proposals, but we're happy to add them if it makes people feel good.
As a matter of fact, the chairman of land use made the proposal, and he's here, so...
Why don't we get feedback from the board? Brenda, would you like to ask any questions or make any comments?
No, I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
No, I was at the meeting, and I thought we pretty well chewed it over.
Okay. Joe?
Yeah, just... That's my only question really is, is it the intention that they can go up as high as they want with solar? I guess is the question. Or is it... Or is it what's necessary? I mean, you know, I can't imagine a law that just says you can go up 200 feet if you want with the solar. I mean, it doesn't...
Well, I mean, we can...
It's some restrictions.
We could just say solar alternative energy generation is encouraged and stop with... And just make... And not reiterate the exemption.
But if it is exempt already, that's something we might want to consider addressing, right?
I don't think so. I mean, think about a scenario by which you have a bunch of pine trees. Most of the times, they won't put solar in those places. Well, okay, so I'll go up above the pine trees, 100 feet above my solar, right? You know, I don't know if that's...
Or even if you put one of those devices that they're looking at on Margaret on top of a roof, it could be 30 feet high or something.
Right.
So I kind of... There should be some kind of a...
Yeah, there should be. And if there isn't, I mean, is that something that needs to be addressed at a different level? You know, or do we put it in there, and if it doesn't stand up, it doesn't stand up? And if it does stand, you know...
It's totally up to the board, and anyone...
Well, it sounds like this is in a different part of the bylaw, though. This... We can easily just strike those words here, because they're just added today. We can change that. But I think that's a separate discussion probably.
If that's the...
Where is it in the bylaw?
Uh...
Just under solar?
Yeah.
I think so.
So I'm not sure we can really address that tonight. We haven't advertised for it.
So would you say it's encouraged without saying it's exempt, maybe?
That's what I would suggest, but I don't know what everyone else thinks. Yeah.
Okay.
So, and maybe we can take a look at the...
Sure. I'm bringing it up because it was brought up today.
Yes, yes.
And wanted to try to figure something out.
I do think that it makes sense to take it out of this in case we end up changing it elsewhere in the bylaw.
Yeah, it's Article 1090 is the solar bylaw.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
No.
Okay. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing I want to add is that they said today at the meeting that with all the stuff going on, these life science labs, that there's a lot of stuff that goes on the rooftop, so that might limit us on the solar end. So, I'd be for just putting in something to say we encourage use of solar.
Yeah, actually, now that you bring that up, that might also encourage people to go even higher to get away. So that's an important consideration.
Something else to think about.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Carney?
One thing that came to mind when Kristin was saying that the parking below the structure was exempt from the height. Do we have to... We don't have any height restriction on that. Say somebody decided they want to put the, I don't know why, 20-foot-high parking story under the building. That's not really what we're thinking of. We're thinking of like 10, 12, I would imagine, right? So...
It's a really expensive parking garage story.
Yeah, it would be, but I don't know why. Maybe they want to hide a Brink truck in there. I don't know.
If they wanted to do a multimodal bus terminal, that'd be great.
As long as they had the parking to support it someplace.
They'd put the orange line somewhere.
No, not the parking lot. Where the last mile buses.
Maybe I'm being a little too picky, but I want to think about it.
No, we, on purpose, didn't... What we see, 10 to 12 is...
Yeah, it's about...
You know, where Wegmans directly in the center, the fire department want to make sure that the ambulance could get through it, so it's a little bit higher in certain pieces. But for underbuilding parking, it would be rare to have a 20-foot.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. It would be, but...
But if you... If we're concerned about it, we can talk about it.
Not unless anybody else is. I just... Thank you.
Okay. Which is, it was really trying to just encourage...
Right.
Underbuilding parking. That's really it. And just to not penalize height.
Right.
To build under...
Encourage it in...
So you could have more flexibility in design.
And to allow... And to... I'm glad that you put in the line about trying to maximize green space. So that's the reason why we would want to have structured parking probably, to reduce the footprint. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Welcome.
Thank you.
I need time for both of you, so...
Betsy Hughes, 7, town meeting member and on the zoning bylaw review committee, co-chair. I just... Just a clarification. In the zoning bylaw on solar, it does not... There's no exemption on height. It does, for roof-mounted systems, it does reference it one way or another.
Okay.
It's just open on that. So I just wanted to...
Thank you.
And if someone's interested in the height thing, we should... We could take a look at that. So it's just a point of clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're just on that clarification. There is some preemption from state government.
Oh, okay.
That you can't unduly restrict any alternative generation, so...
Okay.
Well, that, I mean, you know, then it should be reciprocated. It shouldn't go any higher than it needs to go in order to accomplish what they need to do. So in other words, it should really be both ways.
So we'll listen to Monte, and then I'll get more info.
Aye.
Aye.
My name is Monte Pearson. I'm a precinct... Let's see, town meeting member from Precinct 3 and chairperson of the land use committee. And I am going to do something tonight that I wouldn't normally do, but you mentioned at the meeting today that this is the last meeting that you have before the warrant gets printed up and sent to people, right? And so I just wanted to... Let's see. I think I should explain myself before I start. I'd like to add something to Section 10.5.0. Another... I'd like to add Section 10.5.3.
You want to add a 10.5.3?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I'd like to do is have something about solar power in that section. I don't think that there's anything in it that says it couldn't be there. And the reason is, is that I think that there's actually... All of these, all three IH proposals are going to include the right to do structured parking. And we've talked a lot about structured parking structures and things like that. And I think that as this is, Town Meeting is not going to want to build three... Have... Approve of three structured parking garages. And it won't actually be approving directly the parking garages, but it will be relinquishing control over whether or not three structured parking garages, large ones, get built in Burlington. And I know that members of my committee are very alarmed by that prospect. And, you know, structuring park... The reason there isn't very much about structured parking garages in the zoning bylaws is that Burlington is generally rejected having structured parking. And so I think that the plaintiffs are... Do they have plaintiffs?
Proponent.
Proponents, right, not plaintiffs. That's... Sorry.
Yeah, they're not plaintiffs.
They're not plaintiffs, yeah. Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Just give them a couple of minutes.
Give them a typewriter. And so I think that in order for them to be able to go to Town Meeting with a persuasive case that this new development will be of benefit to Burlington and provide some community benefits, I think there needs to be some kind of promise that they will do some kinds of community benefits related to solarization. And I don't think that merely saying, gosh, we hope you put on solar panels is going to be enough. And so, you know... And so as background to this, the town of Watertown recently passed an ordinance which mandated development of solar power on garages, all new garages and all new and renovated buildings in Watertown. And I have the language of that that I could pass out to you. And... And the reason that I'm bringing it to you tonight is that if you don't put it into the warrant article, then I don't believe that the lawyer and the town moderator will allow something like this to be put into as an amendment, because it will chain... It'd be too much of a change for what the warrant article actually states. And you will then be put in a situation where anyone who opposes parking garages and doesn't see any special benefits to them will only have the option of voting this proposal, these proposals down. And in order to prevent that from happening, I'm suggesting that you include this in your section on Section 10, so that not that you necessarily are approving it tonight, but that at least be on the article and can be withdrawn or some other thing can happen to it. Because if you don't put it on tonight and it's not printed, then no one's going to be able to offer this as an amendment. I can't offer this as amendment on the floor because it's too different, and I'm repeating myself. So you will be stuck with people getting an up or down vote about whether or not they like large parking garages. And I think that none of the three proposals will be passed. And they will then have to wait two years. And I don't think that they want to have to wait two years. I think we want to be able to move ahead on this now. So it's a difficult dilemma, and I thought we were going to talk about it next weekend, next week at the meeting we were having. I didn't realize that there was no other Planning Board meetings. So I was going to bring it up to you and talk about, you know, we could have had a discussion about it. But I'm bringing it up to you tonight because I think this is our last chance to put this in as a fallback position. Without it, I don't know that these proposals will pass.
May I ask you a question?
Sure. This is the language from the Watertown ordinance.
I understand. And so we'll work on it. But is it your intention that this language would refer only to life science developments or all future developments?
My intention would be that it would only work with the IH designation.
IH, thank you.
And you could put that in, yeah. So if we did this with the IH designation, then it would go in with these biotech proposals and say, we're going to have solar on them, and so therefore it's a good trade-off for having parking garages.
Okay. Let's see what the board members think of this suggestion. Brenda, do you have any thoughts?
I kind of like it. You know, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make today's meeting, so you know, I just want to kind of catch up with everyone. But I'm not opposed to something like this. I think...
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. You know, I'm not opposed to something like this. You know, I do... I think renewable energy sources are very important, and I do think it's a good trade-off if we're going to be adding parking garages, you know, more commuters and whatnot. So I like it. I would move forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul?
I think that Monte has a better sense of what Town Meeting will pass than we do. Not, you know, no special reason, except that's where he is and that's what he does. So if he thinks that without a provision like this, that Town Meeting may well not pass it, if it's there, they can discuss it and debate whether they want it or not. But if it's not, they would be more likely to reject it. So... And he made a good point. What he... He came to the meeting a little late, but he said as his opening, if you will, that whether we like it or not, there are all kinds of things that are coming down the line as far as solar and any other type of changes that we can make to reduce our carbon footprint. And that's already happening in cities. There are already rezoning so that you can't do certain things near the waterfront. And I was in a situat recently, and they're building a house, and it's... I was walking under it. It was above me. So it was a good 15 feet. It was like on telephone poles. And you're not going to go to that expense unless you have to.
Yeah.
So I would accept Monte's judgment on this.
Thank you. Joe?
our carbon footprint, and, and that's already happening in cities, there are already rezoning so that you can't do certain things near the waterfront, and I was in a situation recently and they're building a house and it's, I was walking under it, it was above me, so it was a good 15 feet, and it was like on telephone poles, and you're not going to go to that expense unless you have to.
Yeah.
So I would accept Monty's judgment on this.
Thank you. Joe?
I take an initial glance, I, I like the concept, I just feel like it's not fully vetted, I think we need to really have discussion and have some input and things like that on it yet, I think that's where a lot of the best thought comes through, discussion, but I think it's a good, I, like I said, there's, every community in their own way is starting to acknowledge the fact that we're going to need to reduce our footprint, and I think even, you know, I know Brookline has taken it to an extreme by requiring, you know, not, not allowing fossil fuels to go into any new structures that get built in this, in the town.
Right.
You know, it's, this is, this is not an extreme, this is a, this is the way we should be going, solar, and I, I do believe that that's a, I, at initial glance, like it, like to have it fully thought out and fully vetted.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of the things I'm about to say are not how I feel personally, but I'm going to play devil's advocate for a second. With what I said earlier about the type of things that life science companies are doing, we don't know if they're actually going to have the means to put extra things on the roof because of all the equipment and stuff, and one thing you said to me today is that it's going to be becoming more and more prevalent, the use of alternative energies, I mean, playing devil's advocate, if the current administration wins reelection, I don't see that happening because they don't seem like they are amenable, as unfortunate as that is, and as opposed to that, as I am, it doesn't seem like they're very amenable to doing stuff like this, so I just think if we put something like this in the, you know, the wording here, it, I don't know, it seems a little restrictive as opposed to just asking them to consider, or, I don't know, I'm just playing devil's advocate, I'm all for, I mean, I wish every company would put solar panels, I mean personally, but just speaking, just playing devil's advocate, just, just thinking out loud.
Yeah, I, I, I was thinking about this too, and the thing is, is that the biggest argument for having, opening up the town to more biotech firms and stuff like that is that, you know, it's a hot market and we want to be in on the wave of that and stuff like that, but, you know, like, I was looking through charts about sea level rise and stuff like that, and one of the places that's going to be, well, two things, first is, is that I think that the, the mandates from above that I was thinking about are going to, are more likely to be state-generated, that the state is going to be saying things, whether or not the federal government does, and the second thing is, is that one of the places that is vulnerable to sea level rise is East Cambridge, the prediction is, is that by night, by 2030, that East Cambridge will be vulnerable to storm, high tide events, where large parts of East Cambridge would have salt water in them, and if that happens, the biotech industry is, is going to have problems with electrical supply and things like that, and it's going to be moving out of East Cambridge anyway, so I'm suspecting that we're going to have a outflux of biotech firms away from the East Cambridge area, I think that the, the development that's going on there now is, you know, not being very carefully thought out, and so I think that biotech companies in the next four or five years, if you think, as a planning board, think about it in the long term, that over the next four or five years, people are going to start moving away from the coastal areas because it's going to end up being something, I mean, basically, the United Nations Secretary General said this week that we're making absolutely no progress on holding back emissions, and so that means that not only are we going to have a 1.5 centigrade temperature rise by 2030, but we'll have, get to two, two degrees by 2050, and it's going to be a mess. And so as a planning board, I think it makes sense for us to sort of look to the big future and say, we want you, as you're coming in, to be, to be thinking ahead about what, what you need to do, so that's, that's my perspective, I understand what you're saying is, is that it is, it's not everywhere, it's only in Watertown, and the other town that has it now is Medford.
Medford?
Medford.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, Medford of all places, but, so it, it is an advanced kind of thing to do, but I think that, you know, like, the bigger developments, the part of it is, is that this, we're talking about parking garages, we're talking about large buildings and stuff, and so we're talking about people with probably deeper pockets to asking them to do the solar things, so that's the, that's the balance, I think, that needs to be made.
Madam Chair, I should say, your land use is meeting next week, right?
Yes.
So there's, you know, they're going to look at this, if it's not there, it's not going to be considered, but if it's there, they're going to weigh in and be much closer to town meeting than we are, so I'm just, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I, because I had my speaker, but I was thinking that that, that's where it will get close examination, because Sherry Ellis is there too, she'll make sure.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
I just want to say lastly, I do like your forward thinking on it, and it is definitely something we should consider, and maybe Member Mpeba is correct that we should vet this out a little better, because I do like, in theory, what you're doing, what you're thinking.
Okay.
I like the thinking, I'm just, just trying to think of, is it the best thing?
Exactly, what's the best, exactly the way we want it, yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Just a couple of, a couple of thoughts on it, today during the subcommittee meeting, it was brought up that a lot of the biotech companies use a lot of air movement systems that poke through the roof, so I don't know how this would affect that, I assume that it wouldn't be 50%, I mean, that seems a lot of things to poke through the roof, so this shouldn't affect it in, in that manner. I would think it actually belongs townwide, and in the, in the solar energy section, which I forget off the top of my head what it is, it's, maybe it should be there, new buildings, not just garages, new buildings, and, because as, as Kristen just pointed out to me, and she did earlier at the subcommittee meeting, the new 400 and 600 Summit Drive is, has quite a bit of solar on the roof, already maybe 30% or so, I don't know if you've seen that, Monty, but, and also, I would not, I don't know if it should be here, okay, so that's one thing. Second thing is, I wouldn't want to limit it to solar power, I'd want to limit it to, or other alternate sources of, and other alternate energy sources, for instance, if somebody was looking at geothermal power or even water power, I don't know where you'd do that in Burlington, but water power, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want them to say, oh, we have to do solar, but we could really do X or whatever, so, I, I think it, it needs some, some more talking out, I don't think we can just throw it in there.
Part of the reason I was comfortable presenting this is, I know that Oracle did their parking garage a few years ago, and I think that that's been relatively successful.
Yes.
Right, it actually acts as a, it's a, as a roof to, to the, the cars are kind of protected.
Yes.
Like a second roof for that.
If, if you drive down the New Jersey Turnpike, you'll see that almost all the parking lots along the turnpike are covered with solar panel arrays as well.
Surface parking lots?
Yeah, surface parking lots, yes, interesting.
I, I, okay.
Okay, thank you. I like this idea, and I'm glad you brought it up, so thank you. I understand that this is not the, you're not exactly proposing this wording, this is what you got from Watertown, and I think that it makes sense to put something in so that we can discuss it further. What I, I think we don't know is if the 50% is reasonable for biotech, or if the 90% is reasonable, but those are things that we can change on the floor, if, if the wording is right, we can just tweak numbers, so.
Yes.
I think we can move forward. I also like the idea of expanding this at some point to include other new structures, not just ones in biotech, not just ones in IH, I should say.
Yes.
And perhaps expand it to other renewable sources of energy, but I wouldn't want to miss this opportunity because we want to do something bigger as well, I think we can probably do that as a second step.
Yes.
But if we didn't put this in now, we are missing an opportunity, I think that's your point.
Yes.
Yes.
It is, and it's not possible for us at this point to, to put in something like that for the whole general thing.
We may not, I don't want to bite off more than we can chew, but I also don't want to do nothing because we're not ready to do everything.
Yes.
So, so that's, that's what I'm thinking, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question? No, okay, staff, would you like to weigh in on this?
Well, so two weeks ago, I sat on a panel for the municipal vulnerability program, the MVPP program, that if you remember, Josh received the grant, we put the MVP report together, and it's really to look at communities' resilience, vulnerability, and ability to adapt to changing climate conditions. There was a gentleman on that panel, a selectman in Lexington, Mark, I'm going to forget or not say it correctly, but anyway, he had been the chair of the Lexington Sustainability Committee, and then he became selectman, and he was, they, they said, go around the panel and what, you know, what do you think your community should do, and I said, well, it'd be really great if we had someone like this person to really lead the charge, so I guess my first comment is, I think all of these things are critically important for us to be thinking about as we think about any land use and building and construction moving forward, but we also need to figure out how they're going to integrate and where they're going to sit and where they're going to be most effective, where a regulation or a policy or just anything, you know, our own townwide capital plan, like how are we looking at it there, so I think that for, in, in this second, it was 10.5 for the, in the first place, 10.5 was really designed as the place that we're putting guidance, really, to the Board of Health, I think that, I think putting a 10.5.3 with solar power is a little bit misplaced here, I think if we do want to get at solar at the garage, on the garages, I think if we can put something, as we've already suggested, in the dimensional piece to encourage solar power and solar power generation, and then at the same time continue this discussion, and the gentleman from Lexington did, I said, you should, we'd love to have you come to Burlington if we want to talk with folks that are interested in creating more of a Burlington Sustainable Development Committee here, and really how they've done, you know, just as a model, how to jumpstart it, because I think there's so many things we can do, there's a lot of recommendations that are in the MVP report, and there's a lot of state funding for planning and for implementation of a lot of different types of alternative energy and resilience and climate change adaptation measures we can do, so.
So, where are you suggesting it would go?
Totally.
Where are you suggesting it would go?
I'm suggesting it doesn't go in 10.5, but if we wanted, if, if we want to centralize it to the parking garage issue.
Or the IH, I think what Monty's saying is to IH, correct?
I don't know, I guess my opinion in IH is, what's the difference between a, a building in IH or IG and BG and, I mean, I, that's where I think a solar, alternative energy over any structure should be in the bylaw, but not necessarily in these places. If we want to get at the parking structure piece, where we're talking about it, that we've already advertised in the dimensional requirements in the footnote section, you could put something in there, which we already, we have attempted to put something in, if we want to elaborate it, we can, but I, I don't think adding a new section in, to 10.5.3 makes sense unless we just, we know we're going to be moving it to someplace else to have a more wide breaching effect, but that's, that's just my view.
So you're talking about, in the notes for density regulation, where we had already added something, I think what, what Monty is probably going to say, and I would probably agree with you, if, I'm assuming, I don't know, is that that's probably not strongly worded enough, that it says it's encouraged, but encouraging.
Yeah, I don't think that town meeting will.
Far from requiring.
Yeah, town meeting will say, what does that mean?
Yeah.
I mean, that, we don't work in a world like that.
Yes.
I didn't suggest we put, I didn't think we should, it would fit in with the density regulation table and things like that, so I, I took, I'm just aware of, I was at a meeting with the town lawyer who was saying that we are too loose with how we put things forward to town meeting, and so I was trying to be a little more.
Right.
You know, fit into what goes on the warrant is what people get to vote on.
Right.
And so I went, I'm not suggesting that five, 10.5 is the best place, but I don't know, if somebody else has a better idea of where to put it, that would be fine.
I mean, maybe, do we, how, what time do we have where we could figure out where a good place would be to address this, is there?
Well, this body does not have another public session, there's the meeting next Wednesday, that it can be discussed, that is a publicly posted meeting.
So we could discuss it at that meeting and get something into the warrant and then tweak it in January, right?
The print warrant's going to be about Christmas, so.
Right.
It's just going to worry about Christmas, you know, and it's, they've been tightening up the policy to make sure, to do as little as possible to changing anything after the print warrant, so that's why we're trying to race, trying to get to that goal. Anyway, again, I, I'm total, I'm, I'm very much in favor of putting together something that we can get a larger benefit for, any type of alternative energy sources and solar, especially on parking garages.
Yes.
I'm just not exactly sure how to fit it in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Would it go into the section where, about parking garages? You are going to talk about that tonight, right?
We are. Actually, we have another member of the audience that wants to join you, you don't have to leave, I just want to invite Sherry because I think she has something pertinent to say. Paul, will you just, did Sherry want to talk, or did you have something you wanted to say?
No, no, I just want to say, I, I don't think it should inhibit us from acting on this, because it's not in the exact place we want it in our, our zoning tables and so forth, because if we put it there and as we move forward, they say, we say it really belongs in another section, we can move it and expand it and so forth, but well begun is half done, and I think it's a good place to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry?
Sherry Ellis, town meeting member and on the zoning bylaw review committee, I have real concerns about putting something in the IH dimensional requirement amendment having to do with solar. I, I understand all the points about, you know, we, we want to encourage alternative energies, but we want to encourage all alternative energies, I don't want to, you know, stipulate it and just put a little Band-Aid here about solar when we really need to think about, you know, it all in general, the net zero carbon footprint, kind of, all of that needs to be looked at, and I have real concerns about putting something here, especially without hearing from some biotech, there's a lot of rooftop structures on top of there, and, and what dimension, or what percentage would they be happy with, could they do 50? Are we putting, we talked at the subcommittee meeting about putting, you know, more restrictions on them, and are they going to be wary to come here if we keep putting more restrictions? So I would want to hear from them specifically about this particular amendment, but in general, and I, I think we need to look at it, but I don't think just slapping something in here real quick is the way to do that, and I'm really concerned about that, so that's my comment.
Don't run away, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Rebuttal.
The question, no, no, the question is, what do you think about putting something like this in, just into the parking structure?
I think we need to look at it as a whole, and I, I understand that we want to get something going on there, but I think adding another dimension, no, that's not the right word, adding another item into what we've already started is just going to add mass confusion, and I think that's just going to defeat, you know, the, the point of rezoning these and/or making parking structure definitions and figuring out the parking structure, we have to figure out that first, and then to add it in solar, and again, to Member Cavino's point, what about water or wind or whatever else, if somebody wants to do wind instead of solar, it, you know, then you're limiting things, so I think it needs to be.
You want to put a windmill on a building?
Well, no, I don't want to put a windmill on a building, but if someone can figure Well, no, I don't want to put a windmill on a building, but if someone can figure out a way to use wind opposed to solar, you know, if they're in a shady area or whatever that you can't use solar, of course, they probably can't use wind either, but, I mean, I don't know all of the nuances of all of the alternative energies, but I think it should be studied as a whole before we just start throwing things in. And this particular, just throwing it in, in this section, doesn't seem like it fits there at all. So, sorry.
Madam Chair, this doesn't restrict anything else, does it? Doesn't restrict wind or some other, you know?
Well, it says solar. It doesn't say anything else.
I think it dictates solar, although, I mean, this is just the Watertown phrase.
If you have this in, it doesn't mean that they can't consider, it's not restrictive of other.
Well, it says they must put solar.
Right. But, but again, this is just Watertown's verbiage. We're not tied to this.
So we can change the word to alternative energy.
Yeah.
That's why it looks-
I don't think that you were suggesting that we use this language exactly.
Verbatim.
No. This was an example.
Whatever works, whatever works best.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea. The problem is that we might not have time to do it properly. And that's what, that's what I'm worried about, because I think we all agree we want to do it.
Right.
Okay.
Can I ask Kristin? It could, it could, we're talking about zoning right now, but solar energy, could it, could something that refers to solar energy be in the general bylaw? In your opinion, okay. The reason I ask that is because, yeah, if we don't catch the boat, and we have three garages or new IH structures built before we get solar energy on the, on the books, or before we, you know, if they pull their permits before we even start finalizing it, then they're probably, they, they may do it, but they may not be required to do it. But if it was in the general bylaw, and I don't know how you'd do that, but I know there is a big difference between something in the general bylaw and something in the zoning bylaw, where the time to act is, is much more favorable in the, in the general bylaw, time to act as far as the town is concerned. For instance, when they did the signed bylaw, and they said, "No more, no more signs allowed, billboard signs," one of the reasons, I understand, they put it in both the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw, is so that they could take all the billboard signs down immediately. There was no grandfathering. Am I right? I think I'm right, all right?
Well, and the Brookline Fossil Fuels doesn't sit in zoning bylaw, in the zoning bylaw.
It sits in general.
I mean, it's, right, it's not, it, it might be in both, but it's-
But it's all, it's only relating to new, new construction. If it was going to relate to existing construction, it would have to go into the general bylaw if you really wanted to have teeth, right?
Right, but even, well, say, say all this legislation gets passed at, at town meeting, and it doesn't include anything about solar, then these people would not be, these three sites that we're looking at right now may not be required to put solar on. But if we put it in the general bylaw in the future, before this was permitted, building permits are built, then it could be required, right?
Go back and require it within a certain amount of time. You can't, like you said, it's not grandfathered in until the news changes, and then you get another bite at it.
So I, yeah, so I was, I was thinking how, how I think Monty was thinking, now is a good time to catch it, but maybe we can still catch it.
If it's in the general bylaw, then you can catch it anytime.
And from what we've been told, these three properties, this is, it's future planning. They don't actually have a use, a tenant that they're planning for immediately, so we may have a little bit of time, probably not a lot of time. But that is something that the Board of Selectmen would have to take on, correct?
The general bylaw's not really-
Right.
Not in our purview, but-
Right. So what you're saying is, is that if this spring, we were to introduce a general bylaw about solar power, and then brought it to town meeting in May, and it was passed in May, it would still apply to, it would then apply to these projects because the projects haven't actually been permitted and done yet?
Well, just, general bylaws apply all the time. Zoning bylaws, if something, you can get grandfathered in for when you build it.
They would have to comply within a certain period of time.
There's no grandfathering, you know, generally. But I think there's a place for solar in both places.
Oh. Because the thing is, is that in Watertown, I think that they, it was a, oh, I don't know. I don't know, never mind, forget. I don't remember exactly. It said it was a town ordinance, so I'm not sure whether that meant it was a general, general bylaw or a zoning bylaw provision. So I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know exactly. If that's a way of doing it, then we could do it this spring, and, and do a general bylaw that included this kind of language and had more kind of if this, then this, and that kind of stuff in it, that would be more flexible.
We can still do the zoning bylaw in the spring, too. We can still do the zoning bylaw in the spring, too. I mean, it needs to be in both places, like the signed bylaw.
Yeah, you could.
We could do it together, yeah, so that they fit together.
But I think if you, if you do it, I'm not sure in the general bylaw, now, can you break it down into zones? That's a good question. Or is it a general bylaw that applies generally to town?
We're going to have to take a look at it. I mean, the signed bylaws in-
Yeah, that's true. The signed bylaws, it applies in different zones, different ways. I don't know if that-
But the only parking garage that has been built in IH, they, they chose to put park, they chose to put solar on the parking garage. I mean, we went through site plan review, and at the end, they said, "Oh, we'd really like to do solar panels."
Right. So it, it sounds like there is an opportunity to address this through the general bylaw where we'd have a little bit more time.
Mm-hmm.
But if, I mean, that would be up to the Board of Selectmen, and they would still have to move relatively quickly to make it for a May town meeting.
Why would it have to be up to the Selectmen?
Are they the ones-
The general bylaw, we, yeah, we're not, we don't have-
Who else could propose the general bylaw?
Yes, the bylaw review committee could do it, yes.
The bylaw review committee could introduce something like that, couldn't it?
Get back to Sherry.
And you would, I believe they would bring it to the Board of Selectmen, though, correct?
Everything goes through the Board of Selectmen to go on the warrant.
Just as a historical note, what we did with the, with the billboards, which we gave them five years. Yeah, there's a, there's a sunset clause, they call it, right.
Okay. I don't think we're going to resolve this tonight, but I think there, it's a really important idea, and I'm glad you brought it forward, and I think we need to start working on it diligently.
Thank you. I know it was an awkward way of putting it together, but I just, I thought that you had another meeting this month. Thank you, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monty.
Okay, so, I think we, is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak on these matters? No, okay. Why don't we continue this and take all of this under advisement?
Make a motion, continue this to the planning board meeting of January 2nd, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. All right. Moving on.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, take items 7E, 7F, 7G, and 7H together for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. Item 7E is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article II definitions, and Article IV use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to parking structures submitted by Escudal Realty LLC. Item 7F is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article V dimension regulation schedule as it pertains to parking structures submitted by Escudal Realty LLC. Item 7G is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article VII parking structures to modify the requirements for parking garages submitted by Escudal Realty. And item 7H is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the General Business District 1 to 3 Ray Avenue. Ray Avenue Trust is the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Thomas Murphy here for Escudal Realty LLC. Mr. Michael Murray was with me last time, couldn't make it tonight. However, in, I think the word might have got out a little bit, but we've come to the conclusion that we should probably talk about this a little bit more, and it's going to be our ultimate plan to take this off the January agenda and maybe go forward on it in May, given some of the comments that we've received, both from this board and from the zoning bylaw review committee when we were before them. So I was going to be here tonight anyway, so I told Mike that I would make the board aware of this, but I, I did want to request, I guess, we'd like to keep the process moving. I, we don't want to be here in April scrambling because in the last minute. So we're going to make the same request of Ms. Ellis and, and her committee, that we kind of stay on their agenda and keep working with them, because ideally, we'd like to come forward with a proposed article that everybody has opined on and brought into and kind of worked out, as opposed to you folks getting it, dumping it out a week, about a month before, you've got to fix it and get it ready to go. And so we just think it's a better process. So, and I know that in the past, you've done subcommittees to, to, to deal with these types of things. So we would be very interested in, in working with a subcommittee to kind of work through some of the concerns that were raised at the last meeting and try to resolve them.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just kind of, I wanted to throw that out there tonight. Obviously, we don't have to start next week, but we would ideally, usually, warrant articles for, for May have to be in by the end of March sometime. So ideally, working through January into February, if we could be working with a subcommittee to try to-
Right.
Something, if anybody's had a chance to look at.
All right. I would suggest that we appoint a subcommittee and have that subcommittee start working early January.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Okay. I think this is probably a subcommittee a lot of people are going to be interested in participating in. So why don't people email me if they want to be involved in it, and I'll appoint someone, and we'll get back to you. Okay?
That'd be great. And I'll check in with Kristin, and I don't expect it to be a whole bunch of time, but it'd be nice to have somebody to bounce things off of and work with.
I think it's, I think a subcommittee is exactly where we should work this out.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. But other than that, like I said, it would be our intention to submit something to the Town Administrator's Office before we talk to Betty, I think, December 18th, you wanted to hear, get something formal. I know in talking to staff, there might be some desire on your part to maybe go forward with the definition part of things just to get them on, online for January.
I think we're going to talk about that shortly.
So I know that's kind of part of our package. I don't have any problem at all lighting the, the ball on that one over to your, your side and run with it.
Okay.
Or if you have something you need from us, obviously, let me know.
Okay. Before we move on, is, do any board members have any questions for Mr. Murphy about this matter? No? Okay. All right. So we'll continue?
Well, before you continue, because one of these things is the definitions.
That's right.
And it did come up today at the subcommittee. I'm not sure if Ms. Ellis wants to talk about the suggestion or thought of moving forward with some of those pieces and definitions. It's something we could consider. I don't think it, if we feel that it's important to do to clarify parking structures, we can do it. Parking structures exist now. They exist in IH. We built them. I don't think it's a critical piece to move forward with the IH, but if it's, if people feel it's helpful to do so, then we can consider it. So I guess I'm, that's where I stand on it.
Ms. Ellis, would you feel comfortable moving forward with this separately, or do you feel, or?
I mentioned at the subcommittee that there, there's no definition for structured parking.
Right.
And we're using the terminology. I don't think it's a critical thing that it goes forward this particular town meeting, but I do think, again, we need to look on that because I had a lot of concerns about those definitions, and to work those out before January might be really tough. So I, again, I'd rather not-
Brush it.
Put a piecemeal one definition in and then work on other definitions later. So-
So maybe we continue all of these and just, and continue working on them through, starting in January?
I, I think so. I, I'm not sure, I don't want to speak for the whole committee because we didn't really, when Tom came before us the last time, we didn't really talk too much about it in, in detail of definitions and things. So I don't want to speak for the whole committee, but just from my own personal thing, I think it would be better to do it as a whole than just throw in one definition and-
Yes.
Work on the rest later.
Before we continue, do the board members have any questions on this? No? Everyone feel comfortable with waiting on this?
Just one question. So the, the articles on IH that are going forward, do they reference structured parking? The words structured parking. And if so, is there now a definition in our bylaw that says what structured parking is? If there isn't, we might have to change structured parking to whatever's in our bylaw.
Hold on. There is not a definition there. In the use table, structured parking is, do you find, hold on, give me a second. Parking garages and our parking structures for more than three vehicles, including both enclosed and open garages and structures above and below ground. That is the use table wording for all structured parking. So all of those single-family homes that have four-car garages have structured parking.
It may not be defined, but it's in the use table, so to say.
That's how it is defined. That's how it exists right now. All the, anything that's been built has been built with those provisions. Everything is by special permit if it's a parking garage. So personally, I think it makes sense for us to take a more detailed look at this and really do it right.
Great.
So with that in mind, I think we should continue.
Okay. Where are we going?
Madam Chair, make a motion, continue these matters to the planning board meeting of January 2nd, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So we'll be in touch very shortly about the subcommittee. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. Item 7I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, One Wheeler Road, U66 Corporation is the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. We're getting set up here. I'm Thomas Murphy for the applicant. If we're here tonight, it's Jim White, who's the project engineer, John Luffo, who's the architect, and Mr. Boaz, Daniel. This is a site plan approval that's going to be, we've been here a couple times. There's been a little bit of a break since our last appearance. In the meantime, we're here before the Conservation Commission, got some input from them, and we've revised the plans in accordance with some of the comments we've received from the departments, plus what the Conservation Commission was looking for.
Tom, could you pull the mic a little closer, please?
And we've-
Thank you.
We submitted the revised plans earlier this week, and we're here before you tonight, obviously, to answer any questions and address any concerns. And if everything looks good, we'd love to have a vote this evening so we can get moving on the project as we move into next year.
Okay. Could you summarize for us any changes that have occurred since the last meeting?
With the chair's permission, I'm going to turn it over to Jim White, who did all the work, and he's probably much better than I can.
Okay.
Good evening. Just very briefly, go over some of the revisions. We got revisions from the Conservation Commission. They asked us to change the roof drain location, which we did, so it does not, does not go to a wall quarry device. It goes right, correctly into the infiltration system. They also asked us to add some more plantings in the area next to Iron Brook, which we did. I believe we added 12 additional shrubs in that area. They asked for information on a wall quarry device, which we gave them. And I think that was about it for Conservation. Building Department-
Pull the mic a little closer, please. Thank you. It, it doesn't work unless it's really close to your face.
Okay, the Building Department requested, yeah. The Building Department asked us to add one more handicap parking spot, which we did. The Engineering Department asked us to add two water valves and a water pipe and a fire hydrant, which we added to the plans. We also, as, as you requested, added additional plantings along Millsix Turnpike, I believe it was about, I have the number in front of me, I think it's about 12 additional plantings, plants along Millsix Turnpike, and we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, that, that's a little difficult to see up there. Do you have some- Do you have something that's...
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
So, is this the... Does this look like you looked at today? It's cherry. It's more than, more than we're seeing today.
So, initially, we had three trees with two shrubs on each side of those, um, one shrub on each side of the tree, so two, two shrubs with each tree. Now, we have six shrubs associated with, with each tree. So, we added a considerable number of plants along here.
Are those existing trees?
No, those are proposed trees.
Okay. They're new trees?
New trees.
Thank you.
Make it clear. Uh, and we also had before, these, these green circles here, 12 additional plants for the riverfront area. Those plants were, um, uh, chosen by our environmentalists for riverfront area use.
Are they trees or...
They're shrubs. They're high shrubs, so they're about four...
They're shrubs.
They're four-foot-high shrubs.
Okay. So, this plan is a little different than the one we saw in the office today?
This one?
No, no, this is, this should be the same one.
Because I thought those were red maple trees.
We have, we have three new, we have new red maple trees here.
Oh, okay. They are trees. Okay.
And, and we have shrubs. Um, there's...
Yeah. We have the older ones.
One, two, three.
Okay.
Three trees, three, and then one existing tree and 12 additional shrubs.
Okay. And what are the shrubs?
The shrubs are Carmen Surface Berry, Carmen Winterberry, and Sweet Pepper Bush.
Okay. So, those are four to, four to five.
Just to make sure I'm understanding you, there are going to be three additional red maple trees to the right of the drive along with some shrubs that were chosen by the environmentalist. And then on Long Middlesex Turnpike, there are three new trees and each tree has six shrubs surrounding it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure I understood. Okay. Um, anything else?
Uh, that's, that's, that's the gist of the, of the revision since the last time we were before you also.
Okay. Thank you. Kristen?
Sure. Um, so, the last meeting, uh, we talked about the site, site circulation, um, and I know I mentioned some pedestrian connections, uh, into the site, in and around the site. Um, so, right now, the sidewalk that is along Middlesex Turnpike from Lexington to Bedford is, um, it goes on either side, but in this area between, on all the ramp side, the sidewalk goes up until the high, the high-tension, uh, power station there, goes in front of that, crosses in front of Dunkin' Donuts, and then follows, follows south. So, what we're, what we'd like to do and recommend is for this site to be part of the pedestrian network, um, to make, to have them, and can you get a street view?
Yeah.
Um, so, on their side of the street, I actually looked at it today, it's, it's, um, fairly flat, which is nice. Uh, yeah, and that giant trucking. If I go up to the corner, oh, there we go. So, perfect. So, um, currently, there is not a sidewalk on either side of Wheeler Road and, in, well, except right there. But as you go south, um, you're going over Culver, you get into some steep wetlands. But right here, um, what we don't, we would not suggest a crossing, we'd, crossing should always be at the signalized intersections. So, we would, we would recommend that they create a crossing across Wheeler Road, um, right there and then meet in, meet into their site, whether they go down Wheeler Road or create a sidewalk network into the site somehow to their internal network. Um, we would, as we do with every other applicant, really, to make sure that anything here, any tenant here, any patron can, um, you know, travel between all these properties safely. So, we would ask them to construct this part. And then, can you flip around? So, if you go south, if you look at the guardrail there and then the other side's literally water on, on the other side. Um, the, this is a tricky part of road. Um, the Engineering Department, I think, since I've been here, we've been looking at what, how can we really build a better pedestrian path along this roadway because of, but these are challenges. Um, so, you know, if we wanted to try to, I wouldn't recommend that we mandate construction at this time of something in there since we don't know the answer to that question yet. Um, but if there was any type of contribution to that effort, we would, um, recommend that. Um, so, sidewalk connection, sidewalk connection into the site. Um, then we want also, as we've reiterated at the last meeting, that this is depending, if, you know, if it was one or two tenants, that's fantastic. If you have a lot of smaller tenants, we want to make sure we balance those tenants that they're all not, you know, fast casual lunchtime restaurants, all at lunch and it's packed and busy. So, really to, um, make sure that the applicant and property owner is balancing the tenant and the tenant peak hours to, so the site works. Um, and the, um, last thing, and as we got to it today, we did, and I apologize to the chairman, we did have the older plan in front, um, front of you earlier. So, there, there is added landscaping, but to the, um, around, you know, around, coming around the corner where we're talking about the sidewalk, is there additional opportunities for, um, some, some landscaping options that doesn't block visibility into the site for signage, but also gives the pedestrian experience just a better feel?
And where specifically did you mean?
Um, so, there's the colored green on the right, on the left side, I just want to understand what's happening there.
So, on the left side of the drive?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, those are my recommendations. Otherwise...
Well, did you mean on the corner of Wheeler Road and Middlesex Turnpike or do you mean on the left side of the drive or did you mean both?
Just, I just want to understand what was going on there and if it was just grass is our opportunities for something. So, um, yeah, other than that, um, the CONCOM did mention if we could pull back any pavement. Um, because it's such a small site, because it's retail, I, we're always really hesitant to make anything compact. Um, if we were going to do anything compact, we'd probably say the four spaces all the way, um, to the right of the plan. Um, but I still, I, I don't know. In a retail plaza, if a space is a space, it's a space, whether you're in a pickup truck or a smart car, you know, so, um, anyway. Those are our recommendations. We do have a, a decision drafted. Some of the things I did mention are not yet in the decision, but we will add them depending on what is the will of the board, and, um, that's, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Brenda, did you want to start us off with any questions?
No. Um, oh, wait, no, I don't think that I can contribute.
Yeah, can Brenda participate? Because it opened before she was here.
Hmm, no.
Okay.
Sorry. No, no, no worries. Okay. You can sit quietly. You actually can participate, kind of, but you can't vote.
Understand.
Well, if you had something you wanted to say, then please say it. No, 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 no. I have been following this matter, uh, but no, I do not have an intention to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
I, I noticed, I was just looking at this, and actually, it shows Vine Brook running right beside the property. Uh, and I wondered if there are, at times, we restricted, uh, what can be used for salt and so forth to, on the, on the property in the driveways, and we haven't allowed them to use, you know, regular roads, so, so forth. And although we're going to be MWRA one of these days, I believe we're still pumping out of our well field, and so this just runs right into the well field. So, that's my question.
About, um...
Staff, what, if, are there, my question was, are there any restrictions to what they can use, uh, on this property?
Yes.
For snow, ice, and so forth?
Yeah, there, there are, and CONCOM has the provisions in there, um, the order of conditions. And similar to Middlesex Commons, if on the edge, you'll see the no-salt area or certain things can only be used, um, certain types of deicing can be used. So, I would imagine that those will be repeated in the site because it is very close to Vine Brook. And we do have a condition that all CONCOM can, order of approval conditions are included.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So, the question I have, trying to orient here, and, um, I know there's a, there's a, there's a, a drive aisle that goes around the building.
Yep.
And I, I'm understanding that there's a, a, a recommendation or maybe stronger by the Fire Department that that is a one-way? Well, how is the traffic flow gonna, uh, trying to be on the site?
Yes, intent of that is one-way traffic only.
Okay.
So, someone enters here, they can drive around in a, in a count, um, in a clockwise direction. So, we'll be putting, uh, do not enter signs here.
Yep. So, you can go when you enter...
So, you can come up here, you can, there's enough room, you can turn around and come back out.
So, you can, excuse me, when you enter, you can go right and around, or you can take a left and go up?
Or, or you can take a left and come up here and park in here.
But you just can't go down?
You just can't go down, back down. That's correct. And that's, that is, is recommended by the Fire Department, who agree with that recommendation.
And what's the width of that aisle?
It's tw, it's 20 feet.
20 feet in the back and that's going to be, I just want to, okay.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Mike, um, I, I should have asked you before, but you have the department comments as well.
Yes. Do you want me to just read the ones that have, the new ones since...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We have two new sets, ones from the Police Department on December 4th. Officer McDonough says, "I see no issues with the plans as proposed. I agree with the fire recommendation of one-way traffic around the building. I assume that there's to ensure their apparatus can get around the building. With that being said, how narrow the road around back is, we should ensure there's no parking along the roadway." Police Department. And the other new one is CONCOM from November 19th. We have a couple of things here. Issues of concern, snow removal plan needs to be submitted. The planting plan along Vine Brook should be enhanced. Mentioned that one. Uh, can they pull back the asphalt near Vine Brook in the riverfront area and making the drive aisle smaller? Uh, the roof is flat. The applicant should look, uh, solar panels or a green roof option, timely. And, uh, roof runoff needs to be separated from the parking runoff and routed to the infiltrator directly. That's from CONCOM.
Okay. Do you have any questions about those?
Uh, no, we've seen them. Well, some of them have been addressed. Uh, some of them, um, we're back before CONCOM next, next week, I believe, uh, to discuss, you know, some of the things like the, they wanted to try to narrow the, the turn where the fire wrench would go around, and that's obviously kind of contrary to what the Fire Department wants. So, um, I believe we left that the way that it was. We'll obviously leave it to the...
Maybe some no-parking signs along there would satisfy the police's concern.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put no-parking signs.
We're happy to do that. We just didn't want to make it too narrow.
Right.
That's a safety issue, so, um...
Okay.
So, all those types of things, we can find middle ground, I think, with the CONCOM, but the other ones that they've requested, we've already done.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, did you have any other questions?
No, although the comment is I like where we, we are down with the project and I think we made some good improvements from when we first started, so, now it's looking good. It's on the manager.
Thank you. Ernie?
Um, a couple of things, just, uh, one curiosity question, if, if nothing else, and that is, does your property line go on Wheeler Road, going east on Wheeler Road or south on Wheeler Road? Does it go all the way to the end of the vegetated area? Can you, do you know?
Uh, the property line actually follows the center line of Vine Brook. So, this is the property line. Is this the line you're looking for? Is it...
Um, well, Hilton Gardens is next sewer, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, does your property line go all the way to the edge of the parking lot, I guess is what I'm asking?
No.
It does not?
No. No, we have old, we have, there's a section of Old Road here. Um, the hotel is, is over here. Uh, Vine Brook is in this area in the center line. This dark line is the center line of Vine Brook, and that's our property line.
I, I know the, whenever a project comes forward that's in that general area of Wheeler Road or even of Wheeler Road that we've been trying to get sidewalk down there, but, uh, I, I know it's very difficult because of the wetlands and I, Kristen, were you suggesting that they give us an easement there? Is that what you were saying for future work, if it could be done?
They only, as, as, um, Mr. White was pointing out, they own, they own, can you point?
Yeah. Uh, frontage ends right at this point.
So, that, so, Liz will point it with the pointer. That point to the dark corner is what they own for frontage on, I'm sorry, frontage on Wheeler Road.
The property I...
So, but to the point that you're right, we've asked everybody for a 10-foot roadway sidewalk easement just in case. Um, for the, the part on the other side, we did do a widening of Wheeler Road, um...
With the donut place, wasn't it?
As part of, uh, the, anyway, it, as part of the widening, it goes onto the northbound ramps. Um, a little bit in that area already, but I think, um, it is always a wise thing to do. But I, we, as I mentioned before, and I'd like to get the board, the feedback from the board of, do, would you agree to construct the sidewalk where they can to the driveway? Um, and then, then the question is, what else? If, F-else? Because I don't think, whether it's an easement, I think an easement's a good idea, depending on what we can do. Um, they only have control of the property to that point. Um, and you know, any, any other ways in which we can enhance pedestrian activity in the area is always good.
In, in my opinion, I could definitely see the sidewalk on, on the part of Wheeler Road where it can, can be constructed up to the, to the, is there a crosswalk there now at the end of Wheeler?
There isn't. They would have to construct the crosswalk. There is a pedestrian signal there...
There's a signal there, right?
That I think you might be able to tap into to get this, this, this light leg. Um, it's...
Oh, it's across the Middlesex Turnpike though, right now, the pedestrian signal for, right?
No, it's, so, there's nothing on this side, so then you turn around. There's a, there's a pedestrian head right there that I'm not sure if we can tap into that system that's in that quadrant there. But we would ask them to cross, to put the crosswalk, um, the appropriate pedestrian notification and that piece of sidewalk connecting into their property.
Is that in the decision that you have?
Uh, it, no, it will be. It's written and, and, um, that's what we would suggest, and if the board agrees, then we will put it in the decision.
Okay.
I know it's been a very, uh, difficult site. I mean, since I've been in town, I, I can't count on both hands the number of businesses that have been in and out of there. And I assume that's because of the visibility, and you seem to be increasing the visibility now, so hopefully, that will take care of that issue. If it does, it'll be a very, very, much more viable site than it is now, and I think the, the sidewalk up to the crosswalk probably makes sense.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I could, um, I spoke to Kristen earlier, uh, this afternoon, and she had kind of, um, raised the, the access sidewalk issue, so I, um, sent it over to Mr. White to kind of look at. And, um, there were some logistical issues with putting a crosswalk there, and I'm going to let him explain it, um, from a legal standpoint that I just want to make the board aware of because I think it factors into the equation here a little bit.
Yeah, it's not very from a legal, just, um, from a, um, difficulty standpoint.
Get in here.
It's from a, it's from a standpoint of difficulty. I know you mentioned pedestrian walk. We don't know if that traffic signal was designed for pedestrian traffic signal there or not. If it wasn't, that's, it's something that we'd have to install, which is, can be difficult, because we might have to bring conduit across the street to wire that into the controller. The traffic signals themselves have been modified for the pedestrian across, the lights to work. The road itself slopes at more than 2%.
Yeah.
And cross slopes of, so either we'd have to read the road or get a variance from the state in order to put a crosswalk in this location.
Sorry, I didn't, could you say that again? Why is there cross?
The maximum cross slope of a crosswalk is 2%.
And the slope is greater there?
It's slope is greater.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
In that location?
Yes.
Maybe that's why the crosswalk is in further right now?
There isn't a crosswalk.
No.
No, there's a crosswalk there.
Across Middlesex Turnpike.
There is, there isn't another one.
I thought there was a crosswalk painted.
The driveway ends, and our sidewalk is across the street, but there's no formal crosswalk between the two.
Yeah, I thought I saw something there on one of the other pictures, okay. It was in the wrong place, but I guess I was, okay.
I think it was owls, the owls, the left and right owls you were seeing.
Google map shows one across Middlesex Turnpike, is that what you're thinking of, maybe?
No, but that's okay. No, there is, you can see the faint outline of it. I can still see it right there. See where there's that white, the white line there on your property? Nope, for that, there you go.
I think those are arrows in pavement marks.
I think those are arrows as you approach, right turn, left turn.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Yep.
No, that right there. It says only, okay, it looked like stripes to me. Okay, that's what was confusing me. Okay.
So, building the sidewalk is, is, no, fairly simple to put the sidewalk. It's, it's everything else involved, but makes it very difficult with the traffic lights.
Okay, but the sidewalk, if you don't have a way to cross over, it doesn't really go anywhere.
Yeah, and also, no, we'd have to move the stop line back, but may also interfere with the detector loops. There's detector loops in the road that tells the traffic, like, when's they go, when to go. And if they don't line up where the cars are stopped, it doesn't work correctly. So, those are just some of the things you have to look at, in order to put a crosswalk across the street there. More than happy to put a sidewalk up the road and ramp in, but...
Is there any way of getting the employees in these stores across the street to Dunkin' Donuts safely? Because I know they're going there. Do we? I don't know if, does a crosswalk have to be at the corner?
Well, it's, it's ideal at the, at the corner, and I think the engineer will agree. If you put it at this location, you have people turning and then accelerating, and not really expecting there to be a crosswalk, so.
Sure.
So, it should go across.
Should be.
But, so, you know, there's, there, there are complications in any roadway that has the multiple signal systems that this one does. But I don't think it precludes the ability to be able to, to provide a crossing. I, yeah, is it super easy? No. But I think it should be, in my opinion, I think it should be explored. As I mentioned to Attorney Murphy earlier, there, there is complexity to building the sidewalk, the crossing, and the pedestrian signal. And therefore, you know, that complexity may, I think it's important to get this site connected to this, this pedestrian system. Whether or not we talk about any of the other pieces of the frontage, and maybe we leave that for later. But I think it's important to try to finalize this piece and work with the different parties that need to be involved. But that's, if you ask my professional opinion, that would be it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I maybe just, I would agree, if, if we're just talking equipment, you know, clearly, you can put whatever equipment is necessary in there to make it a workable pedestrian crosswalk. That costs money, but it can be done. The thing that concerns me is that it's also gonna require a waiver from the state, or a variance from the state, because the grade is not where the state requires it to be. And that's something that's out of our hands. That's, that's not something we can just throw money at and make it work. If the, if the state does not grant that variance, for whatever reason, and I've never gone through the process, I don't even know what's involved in it. But that's out of our hands. So, I guess, I would ask the, the board's consideration of not making a requirement in the decision, but a suggestion of, our willingness to look into it, or to do what we can, but...
Well, perhaps we could petition, we could require you to petition the state for the variance. And if the state denies the variance, then we can't make you do it.
Okay.
But we could require you to try.
We've had that condition multiple times, up and down Cambridge Street, and in some parts along the state-controlled Middlesex Turnpike. That the condition reads that, this is what we want you to do, we feel it's important to do, we recognize you have to go to DOT. You have to make all best efforts to get it done through DOT, and if DOT ends up denying you, then we need to...
As long as that's the understanding, I don't want it to...
I understand.
All right, Building 19 had the same condition.
We can't ask you to do something that's impossible.
We're not asking to break the law.
No, but, you know, to all due diligence, to get to that point of asking the question and going through that process. And, and I think, you know, the town of Burlington will help be with you along the way. This is a key connection that I think we've been looking to make. And I think part of the reason this site hasn't been as successful is because, you know, you're kind, you're kind of just on its own over there.
It's a little island.
Really connecting it is, is an important point to, you know, make your site successful as well.
It's a huge safety issue as well, and there's no doubt those employees will be going to that Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, it's right there.
I'm sure they do it now, I mean, there are...
Yeah, right.
Yes, they do. Ernie, are you all set?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, I don't have anything new to say, but I just wanted to, well, and I, well, actually, do have one new request, but I wanted to clarify a few things. So, I agree about the cross and the sidewalk. And I think we can phrase it so that you are, you, if DOT denies you that variance, obviously, you can't do it. So, we can work that out. One of the things that CONCOM mentioned was solar panels on the roof. And I was wondering if you are amenable to that.
We responded to Conservation Commission on that, and told them we were amenable to it, to look at it. However, I know, I don't think you received my letter that I sent to Conservation. We're gonna have potentially eight tenants in this building. Each tenant's gonna have rooftop HVAC units. So, it isn't like we have a nice clean roof up there. So, when we look at the solar panels, we have to look and see how they're gonna fit.
That's fine.
With these eight.
Right.
So, we told them we would look at it, but we, we're not gonna, we can't at this time promise them we're gonna do it or not to it. But it's something that we certainly consider doing in the future.
Well, maybe we can condition it and say, if possible.
Or if feasible.
If feasible, then you could, would put solar on, thank you. I wanna talk to you a little bit about trees. I like that you've added trees along Middlesex Turnpike and to the right of your drive. I'd like to see something on the left side and to the corner, maybe a tree at the, at the drive, on the left side of the drive, and then also on the corner, that would be nice. And then I have a question. I was looking at an earlier plan, earlier today, and it looked like there was mulch as opposed to grass all along this area. Yeah, is that mulch or is that grass?
I believe the plan is for it to be mulch.
That's, it's gonna be mulch, because we don't, if you do grass, you have to irrigate it. And irrigation is something that we don't wanna do.
There's practical problems, I think, just to follow up with the grass, especially along there. You're gonna get a lot of sand and salt plowed there over the course of the winter. It's difficult to keep grass, you've gotta keep it irrigated. And the town of Burlington usually, in July, you have a water ban, and so you, you know, you're not able to do that. And, you know, I guess the sense was, oftentimes, you get rowdy-looking grass as opposed to if you have a nice mulch bed with some nice plantings and stuff in there, that looks better.
So, do the plantings extend, those, those green dots, is that where it stops there? And then, on that curve, is that the curve of the highway ramp?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm willing to accept the mulch thing, although I still don't think it looks as nice. But I would like to see at least two more trees on Wheeler roadside, one at the entrance and one on the corner. And then you can put some bushes around them like you did, right there, yes, and then on the corner, yes, exactly. Pardon? Yeah, that's a great idea. Some ornamental grasses that take very little, that are drought resistant, actually, all along where, where your mulch is. They're drought resistant, you don't have to water them, and they usually look really nice.
This is where the new sidewalk's gonna be going?
Right.
So, some of this is gonna be eaten up with the new sidewalk. So, whether there's still gonna be enough left to put a tree there, I guess, I just...
Okay.
Is it, is it grass right there, though, or is that mulch?
It's gonna be grass here.
Along the front.
Mulch all the way down? This is all mulch to here.
Could you, could you do grass like there is in this picture?
Because there's grass already there now. So, that whole corner that we're looking at, where we see grass, that's all going to be mulch?
Some of it's gonna be sidewalk now, but...
And, and some, some of it's part of the state highway, some of that area. I mean, by Middlesex Turnpike, the property line is about ten feet in off the curb. Feet in off the curb.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, this, this is an existing tree there in the corner, and then you're adding three more trees, not counting this one that we're looking at? Is that right?
No, I think that, I think that existing tree is gonna be removed.
That tree's gonna be removed?
Completely less in the parking lot.
Oh, because the parking lot's extending into that grass, oh, okay. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. I think we can do a little bit better on the, on the landscaping, with a tree there at the entrance, and maybe some ornamental grasses. I just don't think that the mulch is gonna look that great. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. And those were, those are all my comments. Yes?
I just wanted to say that the corner, because Dunkin' Donuts, the building is coming right at the corner. The first visibility you have in, and I see, you see that, if there's any tree, that kinda defeats the reason why we're going through this development, is for more visibility. So, we'd be open to shrubs down there at the corner. You know, obviously, the new sidewalk, whatever, is put behind it or something like that, new shrubs over there. But the tree right there would be really, right, it would obstruct the visi, just like that.
I understand what you're saying. I think we could probably work something out. They have dwarf trees, or those skinny trees, like pear trees. Maybe we can condition it that we'll review the landscape plan with staff, and with, I don't know, a subcommittee or with the chair, just to refine that a little bit, I don't wanna hold it up tonight.
Not leaving it super open, but I think if the will of the board is, I understand, I mean, this tree is clearly like a, just blocks what you're trying to do. But, but, I mean, the whole building is gonna be a lot higher. So, you know, anything five feet or under, I don't think is gonna, well, you know, spaced out. We can talk about some plantings. And then, as we've talked about a long time ago, when Member Cummings was here, she, she did not like giant beds of mulch. So, when we kind of looked at, if you're looking at that corner, there, we would talk about, I don't know, 10 years ago, that there either had to be, you know, 50% of it had to be, you know, at le, at least 50% of it needed to be of plantings. And if there was any, if it was less than that, then it needed to be grass or, or more plantings. It just, you know, mulch is supposed to be kind of decorative around the plantings, not mulch, so.
Not a vast array of mulch.
So, I, where there can be, obviously, we're gonna have some sidewalk here, where there can be, it means either gonna be grass or shrubs, and, you know, the mulch is kind of the accessory, not, not just mulch, so. I think we can work that out, but if that's...
Okay.
I just wanted to get a direction, so we, we understood where we're trying to get to. If the board agrees.
Yeah, so we can, I can ask the rest of the board, but I think, so, does the board feel comfortable with having the details of the landscape plan worked out between staff and chair? Anyone object?
Yes.
Anyone object? No, okay.
I know you're a defender of trees and so forth, but I can, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna be walking across there and so forth?
I think we're just talking about walking across Wheeler Road to get to Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, but that's, there's, there's what, there's the brook. There's the brook in here, and the only people that are gonna be going are the people from that building.
Right.
That are working. And so, you're gonna get, you know, what, 10 or 20 people a day, maybe?
Yeah, that gentleman will walk across. I could see, I could see walking across by Park Bear, if I just wanted, instead of just driving over, grab a coffee.
So, um...
They have delivery now.
This is a public hearing, if there are people in the audience that would like to speak, please come forward. Welcome.
Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7. I'm speaking in that capacity. This is in our neighborhood. As a matter of fact, that, that road, Wheeler Road, is the entrance to our neighborhood. I'd like you to keep that in mind, because as if this was the entrance to your neighborhood, you probably wouldn't be putting a whole row of mulch. You would be doing more plantings, you would make it attractive. We've got some, a lot of residential areas down there with Seven Springs, as well as our area, and a bunch of homes in Precinct 7. So, you know, you've got that big tall wall thing with the parking on top that I saw in the, in the diagram, which is not very attractive. And I just, I, I'm hoping that you all, planning board and Conservation, will do something to assure that, and that, for a lot of people, that's their entrance into Burlington. So, they get off the exit, they take a left, and they get an impression. They've got the big power things there, and it's not very attractive. Now, we're gonna have another thing that's not very attractive, and it's coming into your home. I, I, you know, I just, it sounds like this is so far down the road that there is not much control we can do over it, other than maybe trying to make sure that as this is developed, it's done in a way that, where you're keeping in mind that it's the entrance to our home, so.
Right, and, but Betsy, I will, first of all, we can still make changes to landscaping, absolutely. And also, I do think the building itself is gonna be far more attractive than what's there now.
I just saw the big retaining wall thing with the parking stuff on top of it, on that picture.
Oh, yeah, the two levels.
Oh, oh. The topography, yeah.
But if, but if there's any wall coverings or vines, we...
Wall covering, anything.
That's a nice idea.
And you have these big walls, we've got one in our area, and we're working really hard now to get wall coverings to grow down it. It really, you need to do things to soften it up. We, we had professional designers come in and tell us how to do it with placement of evergreens and things like that, that will soften the wall and also take your eye away from the wall, it makes it much more attractive. And you can have evergreens as well that don't grow to be, you know, 90 feet tall. And, you know, so there are things you can do with landscaping. I just, again, would like to ask that, as this, this project moves forward, that you consider the fact that, like an entrance to your home, you want it to be attractive. It's the entrance to our home of Burlington, not just my physical home, but my town. I want, I wanna be, I want people to say, wow, that's Burlington, it's really, it's good. And this particular piece of property is gonna create an impression of this entire town. And so, you have a special responsibility in what you do there. I encourage you to keep that, that seriously.
So, we can look at that wall when we meet over the landscaping and see if there's some way to soften it, with vines or with some other kind of landscaping, I think that's a good idea. Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Shari Ellis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Just as a point of information or thought, I would assume with the eight tenants that you have, you'd like to keep them going and having businesses, and you want to encourage people to come. The Summit property is up the hill, and lunchtime, walking down ours, I would think that you would wanna encourage the people to come. So, I think that crosswalk is really important, it's just not running across the street to Dunkin' Donuts, especially if you put like a Starbucks or a Pete's. Then you're gonna have people coming down from the Summit. So, I think that's really viable to get that sidewalk and the crosswalk in there, if you can at all do it.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, yes, Tom?
One more point, if I could, Madam Chair, and I agree with what Shari just said, because people are talking about people going from our site over to Dunkin's, and ideally...
There's other places, yeah.
So, it's, it's a good idea for us to fix it, too, which we don't have a problem with. We get a variance from the Board of Appeals as part of our initial approvals here on impervious surface, because we're in a water resource district, can't be more than 40%, this is actually 31%. 69% impervious, 31% pervious. So, my only concern, as we're talking about adding a sidewalk, where we're talking about adding a sidewalk, it could throw our ratios off. Some of that might be in the, might be in the, in the right of... Some of that might be in the, might be in the, in the right-of-way, I, I'm not quite sure exactly how it works out, engineering. And I know you obviously prefer concrete sidewalks. Would it, would it be possible to do some sort of pervious pavers to act as a sidewalk so we don't mess up our ratios? Could we at least throw that out there as a possibility?
Well, I think that's, I think there's absolutely a possibility to, to have permeable type surfaces, whether they're the actual sidewalk surface or you trade some of your parking spaces for a more permeable option. But it needs, I mean, whatever the option is, it needs to be fully plowable in winter months.
Okay.
And be able to maintain, be maintained. So therefore, if it's, you know, X square footage of sidewalk, that maybe it's not as easy, and that cement and concrete, maybe a portion of, a portion of those back four spaces are some sort of paver instead. I mean, I think, and, and if that's even still an issue, I, this board, I, I don't know, I'm speaking, the chair should be speaking, but I would say that for pedestrian accommodations, we would support any additional information to the board.
I think we can work it out.
I was going to say, I just, if we could put language in the decision, so it's not so black and white, that, just with the understanding that we do have that issue, that we might have to, to work with either the sidewalk, unless we can put it somewhere else on site, some kind of pervious surface.
I wonder also, if you have the crosswalk going across at the corner, does the sidewalk have to go down to the drive entrance, or could it go across this grassed area and you put a crosswalk internal to your site to bring people to your internal sidewalk? And then if...
Either way, it's going to be a sidewalk on...
Right, it just, it wouldn't be as long, it wouldn't be as much pervious surface.
I'd have looked at that, and we've just looked at this...
Impervious.
If we did it this way, then we're crossing a parking area and a...
Yes.
Spot, if you bring it down here, you make sure...
Yeah, I understand it's safety issues.
You just have a side, a crosswalk along this, this little neck here of the, of the, so I think that's an easier...
Okay.
Yeah, we have...
Over here is, there's a patio area and stairs going up, so this is a good place to do it.
Okay. I understand.
We'll have it drafted, so, you know, they come up with an alternative to be reviewed and approved by us.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, I'm sure we can work it out. It's not, we're not that far apart. Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. So, you've got a lot in there that's added, and we're going to work out the landscaping, but otherwise, I think we're ready to move on. Okay?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor? I opposed 5-0. 5-0-1?
5-0-0.
5-0-0.
5-0-0, okay. Thank you. Okay?
Make a motion to approve the request of U66 Corporation for the approval of the site plan application for properly located at One Wheeler Road to permit construction of a 22,000 plus or minus gross square foot, two-story commercial retail building with associated site and utility improvements, as reflected on the site plan entitled "Site Redevelopment Plans, One Wheeler Road, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by H.W. Moore Associates Incorporated, dated August 28, 2019, and revised to November 27, 2019", a site plan consisting of 14 sheets. The project is subject to the following terms, revisions, and conditions as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You next go to Page 12.
Pardon me?
Page 12, your next action.
All right. Not yet, Mike. Moving on to Item 9, we have a discussion regarding Mooney Road.
Mooney Road.
Yes. Zero Mooney Road, on Page 12.
Uh, oh, I guess we have minutes.
Page 11, sorry?
She skipped the minutes?
Yes, minutes, minutes.
Did we skip minutes? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
All right, no, it's my fault.
I didn't, no, I didn't say that.
I was hoping we'd be done by nine.
Did we do minutes?
We didn't get any minutes.
We need to approve minutes.
When were these minutes sent?
The one who wouldn't have sent them just left.
Okay, well, why don't we move on to out of orders, and we'll, we can come back to minutes when Liz returns. Zero Mooney Road.
Zero Mooney Road, if you remember, we did the subdivision for one lot. There was, Zero Mooney Road went like this, back down, and then...
Do that again.
Is that the scale?
It's exactly the same. So anyway, the roadway layout through 1950 subdivisions was a little funky. So what, through part of the subdivision, we wanted to correct it. We, last January, we went to town meeting, and we made the motion, which is the first half of the motion you see in front of you here. What we did not do, and what we did not do at town meeting, was to say we convey all these parcels to these properties as pursuant to the subdivision. What we failed to do was finish the sentence and say that we also vote favorably to discontinue those pieces as a public way. So in, for towns that don't have an official street map, the planning board needs to actually take the action to recommend favorably on the discontinuance of public ways pursuant to the MGL, that's stated here that you don't need to read. So that's where we're here. We're resubmitting it to January to add that last sentence to say, and further, we discontinue. So you just have to make that motion, and then we're done.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
And all of you can vote.
Okay. No questions? All right. Who wants to make the motion?
This is the motion at the bottom? Sure.
Yes, on the bottom of Page 12.
Okay. The Planning Board hereby recommends favorably to convey, to convey, to convey, twice. The Planning Board hereby remembers favorably to convey the parcels as shown on Zero Mooney Road definitive subdivision plan from the existing Mooney Road right-of-way layout as follows: To convey Lot X containing 121 square feet and Lot Y containing 2,300 square feet to the property located at 2 Mooney Road, Map 31, Parcel 16-0, and to further convey, and further to convey Lot Z, 74 square feet, to 9 Oak Street, Map 31, Parcel 21-0, and recommends to...
Convey.
Convey a 10-foot easement across Lots X, Y, and Z to the town as shown on the plan referenced above and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81G and 81I, I assume that is. The Planning Board votes favorably on the discontinuance of, discontinuance of the Mooney Road right-of-way that exists within Lots X, Y, and Z.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, abstaining 6-0. All right. So we are still missing, Liz. Does anyone have any other discussion items they wanted to bring forward tonight? No? Okay, I hope...
You can table this.
For all the news, all the new businesses, I was in.
Yes.
So I, we had gotten a correspondence from Dave Murray in relation to the snow being dumped down on Douglas by the Granite Place. Did you get that?
Okay. I've not seen that. Was that the one just, just this afternoon?
Yeah, I think it came today. In relation to snow storage, because I guess they're dumping it into the woods, which is, and it's going down onto...
Pushing it off the Granite Place, probably, that's what it's gonna be.
And it's, and it's a short, so it's going down on Douglas Avenue.
Oh, yeah, Liz reached out.
I remember.
I have an email that says, thank you for reaching out.
Okay, so is that, that we just found out about today?
Well, yes. Sorry, I have too much, too much in here. Is this the one from today or previously?
I think today, I think it came today.
So, I'm sent in the meeting preview, and I don't want to talk too much about it because we already continued the official item, but the, the granite, we were, if you remember at the last meeting, we conditioned the continuance...
Yes.
As to an update, they did provide an update, I did provide, I did give you a copy of it in the meeting preview, as to what they were, how they were meeting the issues that were outlined in the cease and desist order, as well as their plans to move to a separate location. The correspondence we did get is they are going to move all fabrication activities to a different location, so that should not be a continued issue. They haven't yet decided if they're going to stay at this location for a showroom. We don't know that yet.
Okay.
But if there are issues in terms of snow removal, then, you know, we're, we're in frequent contact with the applicant and the applicant engineer, so we can make that known.
Address that.
Yeah. And we did send the correspondence that we received to all the neighbors that had contacted us, so.
Great. Okay, so who has read the minutes?
Oh, here we go.
Which one?
The ones that are listed here, October 15th, September 5th, September 19th, October 3rd.
I didn't see them.
We didn't get them, because I don't remember.
I didn't get them either.
Okay, so we're just going to skip that for this, this...
We can do them on January 2nd.
Yes. Any other questions, any other new business? No? Okay. I just wanted to say, I sent you all an email about the Sculpture Park, that our call for entries has gone live. Please check it out, it's very exciting, and I can't wait to tell you all more about it in 2020. That's all.